I want to be ready. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. Lord, ready to put on a don't worry. Lord, I want to be ready. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. Lord, ready to put on a don't worry. I will not be a sinner. I'll tell you the reason why. Because if my Lord's a calling Lord, I wouldn't be ready to die. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. Lord, ready to put on a don't worry. Lord, I want to be ready. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. Lord, ready to put on a don't worry. I will not be a gambler. I'll tell you the reason why. Because if my Lord's a calling Lord, I wouldn't be ready to die. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. I want to be ready. Lord, ready to put on a don't worry. Lord! Oh, ready to put on a don't worry. Ready to put on a don't worry. Ready to put on a don't worry. Lord!
Okay, that keep you up.
Good afternoon. Right, thank you. Good afternoon. Sorry, technical problem there. This is our board chair, Linda Chinna. I'd like to first recognize and thank the students from Connections, a community-based arts school for their performance of "I Want to Be Ready." Ms. Deirdre Dawkins created the choreography, and Mr. Brandon Booth is responsible for the music. And again, thank you so much for allowing us, even in this virtual way, to still see the extreme, the wonderful talent of our students in city schools. Thank you. I'd like to now welcome you all to the board meeting, the public board meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Just a reminder to folks who are watching with us to please mute your phones. And reminder to board members as we are working through the meeting to please identify yourselves when you are speaking. First, I will start with the roll call for the board. Please let me know if you're here. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McFadden? Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
He is having a bit of tech challenges, but he is present in the boardroom.
Okay. And I am here. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved, Brooks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Bondima.
Thank you. And all those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Uh, McFadden?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm also in favor. This motion passes. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the passing of a former city school employee. This person will be remembered fondly by the greater city school community, and tonight, we're sending our deepest condolences to her friends and family. This is Dr. Dale Parker Brown, who worked for Baltimore City Public School System for over 40 years. She served city schools in many capacities, as an assistant principal, a principal, in several administrative positions at the headquarters, including director of compensatory education, office of program development, and parental involvement as a supervisor and specialist in the Office of Mathematics and Science. Dr. Parker Brown will be greatly missed, and I ask if you would join me for a moment of silence in remembrance of Dr. Parker Brown. Thank you. And now, is there a motion to approve the prior open session minutes?
So moved.
Okay, I heard. I know I heard Commissioner Richardson. I'll go there. And second? Was that Griffin?
Griffin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes?
Yes.
And I'm also in favor. Thank you. And so that motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
So moved, Bondima.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Thank you. And those, all those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Okay. Did I hear Commissioner James? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner McFad- Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor, so this motion passes. That's nine in favor. Thank you. Uh, this evening, since it is the second meeting of the month as part of the board chair comments, we're going to be honoring our retirees with 30 years of experience or more. One of those retirees has responded that she would be attending. So I would like to see if Ms. Earth Sessions is with us.
Ms. Sessions, if you're calling in, you can hit star six to unmute if you're on your phone.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and start if Ms. Sessions is here. I hopefully will just say hello by the time we finish. Ms. Sessions actually had more than 40 years, 40-plus years of service. She started her employment with Baltimore City Schools on October 27, 1973 as a full-time food service worker at the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. She later served at City Springs Elementary, at Johnson Square Elementary, and lastly, at Mount Royal Elementary Middle. She served Baltimore City Schools for 47 years. And so we want to congratulate Ms. Sessions, and please enjoy your well-earned retirement, and we wish you well if you're there. Okay, if not, hopefully those friends of hers who may be watching, please let her know that we wanted, we congratulated her this evening. I'd like to also recognize Sherri Alexander, who started her employment in August of 1986, and she served Baltimore City Schools for 34 years and six months. Ms. Anita Carson started her employment with City Schools August of 1985, and she served City Schools for 35 years and six months. Ms. Naima Kenyatta started her employment with City Schools December of 1986, and served schools for 34 years and two months. And Robin Oliver, who started her employment with City Schools September 1985. And actually, at one school this entire time, Leaf Walk Elementary Middle, and she remained there for 35 years and five months. Congratulations to all of those retirees. I also would like to acknowledge the donation of $600 worth of educational supplies by Kaiser Permanente for Robert W. Coleman Elementary School, and also a donation of $4,950 towards educational supplies by Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company for Thomas Jefferson Elementary Middle School. And I want to highlight and thank Wanda Bread for its part in the generous donation of $10,000 in educational supplies to Glenmount Elementary Middle School. The board approved this donation at the February 9 public board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the personnel, employment, and payroll report and the quasi judicial matters?
So moved, Richardson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm also in favor, and this motion passes. Nine in favor, thank you. And so now, I will turn over to Dr. Santa Lises for the CEO comments.
Chair Chinna, and it is good to see everyone this evening. I'm going to invite Chief Grant Skinner for this evening's PEP agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Santa Lises and commissioners. We have one appointment this evening, and that is Melvin Holmes from District of Columbia Public Schools Ballou Stay High School is appointed Assistant Principal at Pimlico Elementary Middle School effective July 1, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner, and congratulations on that appointment. I want to begin this evening by introducing a new initiative from the Office of Communications and Community Engagement, Community Champions. And Community Champions is a program to honor volunteers and partners for their hard work in our school communities. We've invited schools and families to nominate their candidates, and tonight, I am pleased to announce our first community champion, Joni Holyfield. Joni Holyfield is a West Baltimore native who founded the grassroots organization Heart Smiles in 2015 after the Freddie Gray unrest left many of Baltimore's youth feeling powerless and hopeless. In partnership with the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School Public
Body from DC Public School.
And Bloomberg philanthropists. Heart Smiles operates a citywide program teaching youth the fundamentals of leadership and entrepreneurship while providing exceptional enrichment and leadership development opportunities to youth in Baltimore's most underserved communities. I believe Joni is with us this evening, so I would like to offer her our sincere congratulations and invite her to say a few words about Heart Smiles. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much, Dr. Santa Lises. In 2015, when young Baltimore set the city on fire following the Freddie Gray riots, I had no idea that it would also set my soul on fire too. And my commitment was simple. My promise, it wasn't complicated. Just help one young person in Baltimore realize their power and value already. Help one young person harness the spirit of leadership and entrepreneurship and use it to build up their community and create positive change, not burn it down and make it harder to rise above poverty for generations to come. I never expected to be recognized in this sort of way, let alone awarded for simply keeping my promise. So I'd like to dedicate my award tonight to my heartbeats who have made this journey and sacrificed towards the pain. I have some of them who are watching me now. I know the comment section is turned off, y'all. Just send me some DMs. But thank you, heartbeats, for holding yourselves accountable even when it's hard to admit your shortcomings. Thank you, heartbeats, for finding ways to add value to spaces that are traditionally dominated by adult voices and having your presence be recognized and appreciated. Thank you so much, heartbeats, for consistently demonstrating leadership at the highest level and for making one of our core values, when you are blessed, it's mandatory that you bless others more than just a slogan, but an essential way of life. This is not my award, y'all. This is your award, and I'm forever humbled to cry with you on Wednesday Wednesdays, laugh with you on Friday Thursdays, cuss you out on Focus Fridays, and love on you all week through our morning schools. Thank you so much, heartbeats, for shining your light in the darkest spaces of Baltimore, and thank you for helping us to capture another win for the communities we serve. Thank you to city schools and everyone on this and everybody who had a hand in making this happen, especially Mr. Rashad Satan, who has been a friend of Heart Smiles since day one. Heartbeats, we got the city on our back. Let's continue to lead. Thank you.
Thank you again. And I really just wish that we could present you with your award in person, but know that we'll be sending it to you in the mail with our sincere thanks and congratulations. And I do see, or I did see, I thought, Commissioner Reed, did you either have a question or comment, sir?
I don't want to take much time, but can she tell us a little bit more about heartbeats? The heartbeats? It seems like that's the integral part and a really good feel, good thing she has. But just a little bit more about the heartbeats. I know they're people, but what kind of people and how many? And what are they doing together? Thank you.
Yeah. They about 3,000 strong. They are the young leaders of Baltimore. They are young people who are committed to success, committed to succeed, committed to helping others. They are essentially the bedrock of everything we do and the reason why we do what we do. So when we refer to people who come to our sessions, we don't refer to them as youth or kids. They are our heartbeats because that's what they are to us.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you again, and thank you also to all your heartbeats because Heart Smiles has been also fabulous partnering as we have really sought to expand some of our youth engagement as a district. So just thank you for your, for your leadership, your work, and particularly on behalf of our city's heartbeats. And I like that. I'm gonna have to start using heartbeats. I like that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. So now, as we are speaking of partners, it is now my pleasure to introduce executive directors, Neil Dampier and Jim Longenacker from North Bay Academy, who will give us a brief presentation on their accelerated learning opportunities for middle school students in a unique residential setting. I had the opportunity to visit North Bay, talk with a number of Baltimore City Public School students, and this year really did mark an expansion of a partnership that had been in place for a while, but really, really went to the next level this year. So I will turn it over to Neil and Jim and invite them to share a brief presentation with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lises. Appreciate that. Again, my name is Neil Dampier. I'm Executive Director, North Bay Education, and joined by Jim Longenacker, our co-executive director. And it's a privilege to be here with you. Just gonna take a couple of minutes to share a few remarks, and then we'll show a brief video to highlight some of the amazing work that we've been doing in partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools to deliver a program to city students even in the midst of the COVID pandemic. First, very briefly, I just want to share a little bit about North Bay to give you a little bit more background. We've been providing Baltimore City students together with their peers from across the state with innovative learning opportunities since 2005. During this time, we've served over 250,000 Maryland sixth graders, including 25,000 Baltimore City students. With a state-of-the-art facility, we're located in the Elk Neck State Park, where we use the outdoors as an integrating context to deliver innovative social-emotional learning and support for in-classroom teaching outcomes in a unique, week-long residential program that would otherwise be unavailable to Maryland students. North Bay instills strong values and helps students realize the impact of their choices on their lives, on their communities, and on the environment. We also understand that it takes partnerships between families, schools, communities, and organizations like North Bay to really help students reach their full potential. And it's in this spirit that we launched a residential tutoring program in September 2020 to specifically provide critical support to city school students through the challenges of the pandemic. The North Bay Academy provides in-person tutoring to sixth-grade students to support them through virtual learning, and also provides specific intensive tutoring in literacy development, social-emotional learning, and extensions, all while in residence at North Bay's campus, Monday to Friday. I'd like to just show a short video, and then I will close out my remarks. So if it's possible to play that video, that'd be great.
I think the real goal for us, for me, with this program, I think as city schools, is to really have an experience for young people that incubates them from clearly a lot of the challenge now, but also moving forward. And what we've seen even before with North Bay is that it's an integrated approach. And so young people aren't put in little silos, little buckets, right? I can enjoy media projection in the afternoon at the same time that I am getting extra help with reading, which is one of the things that I got to hear today during the visit. But I think that holistic approach to, to young people in ways that oftentimes institutions, frankly, we don't do as well as we should. And I think that, that the power of North Bay is it really brings all of those pieces of young people's person to bear while developing leadership capacity, while also giving the extra help academically. And frankly, just being able to see nature in a different way than they have before. What stood out for me, which is true for all learning, and it's been a mantra since I've been in the classroom, and that is, the proof is in the young people, right? Like, people can do their dance and their song and whatever show, and I tend to, you know, like, okay, that's great. But in the end, it shows with students. And so what students talked about were the relationships. What they talked about were the different experiences that they had exposure to. What they talked about was the additional support. What they talked about were times to laugh together, to run during break. And I would say what really struck me, to be honest, was why, as a society, have we not prioritized this kind of experience and learning for all children?
So before I go any further, I just want to first take a moment to thank Dr. Santa Lises, obviously, for coming out to visit the program. But both her, and in particular, Chief Tina High Hubbard and her team for their support of the program. It's been a pleasure working with them through what have been unique times to partner and deliver this. I really think Dr. Santa Lises captured the spirit of North Bay when she mentions educating the whole child and says it so well when she poses that question of why haven't we prioritized this type of learning for all children across all zip codes? What North Bay, in partnership with Baltimore City Schools, has done through the academy to provide support for students and families through this in-person tutoring throughout the pandemic, was recently described to us by the Maryland State President, Bill Ferguson, and some others, as nothing short of miraculous. And so we're incredibly proud of the effort and of the partnership. North Bay has funded the academy program for Baltimore City students through a very difficult financial time to the tune of about $4.5 million out of a total cost of about $5.1 million. As we look to the future, we're really excited to continue the strong partnership to effectively respond to and support the learning and development needs of city school students through innovative programming that serves the whole child. In school year 2021, 2022, provided we're able to partner to secure adequate funding, we plan to deliver an expanded academy pilot program, which will provide even more robust tutoring services as well as our impactful, week-long residential program to city students. To deliver on this, though, will require the continuation of our strong partnership that we forged over this past year and, and over the course of our history, and also making funding for this type of experience a priority. Thanks for your time and your support. We look forward to working together to serve Baltimore students in the coming years. And I would like to take the opportunity to extend an invitation to all of you to come and see the impact of the program firsthand on your students. So thank you all again.
I just want to thank again Neil and Jim and the entire North Bay team for the way that they mobilized to support some of our most vulnerable young people during the last year and just, and really looking forward to exploring more ways that we can partner moving forward, particularly as we talk about what young people need to re-enter the space of school differently than just kind of walking in a built-in. Like, what, what, what do they need to do that? And I think those are some of the conversations we're having. So thank you again to Neil and Jim for, for visiting with us this evening and sharing that work. Much appreciated. Next, I would like to give an update on where we are with in-person learning. Last week, we had more than 12,000 students in kindergarten through fifth and grade nine participate in in-person learning, which represents nearly 29% of students enrolled in these grades, and an estimated 2% increase per grade level, and some even more over the numbers I reported at the last board meeting. Our in-person students generally reflect our total student enrollment in terms of race, gender, and student subgroups like English learners, low-income students, students from low-income families, and students with disabilities. I think one of the things that has also continued to be true is that we are seeing a larger proportion of English learners and students with disabilities represented in our in-person learning relative to the larger population within Baltimore City. Over the course of the week, daily attendance rates for these grades were higher for students returning in person than their peers remaining in a virtual environment. Students returning in grades four through five, four and five, had some of the highest attendant rates for the week. And I personally was particularly pleased that ninth-grade students showed strong attendance patterns for that first week and really connects with a lot of our focus on ninth grade and some of the particular needs of our ninth graders in their first year in high school. As a reminder, on April 12th, we will be welcoming our pre-K, middle school, and 12th-grade students back to our classrooms. Then, on April 19th, our grade 10 and 11 students will have the opportunity to return for in-person learning. As always, families have the option to remain in virtual learning for the balance of the school year. And I really do want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who so diligently really worked to be able to offer the option of in-person learning for every family who does want their student or students to return to the classroom. And I'm also pleased to announce that in the past seven weeks, we have invited every active city school's employee to sign up for a COVID vaccination. And more than 5,000 staff and contractors have now been vaccinated to date. And this includes many others, by the way, who have been vaccinated outside of the city schools partnership. So with that, we estimate that about two-thirds of our staff have received at least one dose of a COVID vaccination. I will be receiving my second dose on April 7th. And so I think what, what this points to is that that ground effort, our collaboration with some of the, the different employee units really is yielding the opportunity for staff, all staff, all employees, and affiliates to be able to receive the vaccination. So a big shout out to our Human Capital Office just for the yeoman's work and lifting that, as well as our partners at Johns Hopkins and University of Maryland. Now, I'd like to take a few minutes just to address some of the misunderstandings and misconceptions about the asymptomatic pool testing created that I think by some distortions that we can address here. So in the past two weeks, we have tested just over 8,200 staff and students in 646 pools. There were positive results in 36 pools. And what's important to keep in mind is that the subsequent testing of every member in those 36 pools revealed only one person in each pool was positive. So that's 36 positive asymptomatic individuals out of a total of about 8,200 staff and students yields a positivity rate of just 0.4%, which is in the range or below, well below, the rates of other districts that are being served by our testing partners. When you compare this rate to our community indices across the city and state, a 0.4% positivity rate really shows that our schools, the mitigation factors that we've put in place, really are in place, are working, and that by identifying 36 asymptomatic individuals early, which was really the purpose of this testing, we're actually preventing or reducing the spread of COVID in our schools. So that's where we are with testing. I am really grateful to the team that's worked so hard to make this program a success, to our testing partners at Ginkgo BioWorks, and, excuse me. And we'll be beginning with our ninth graders. They just started saliva testing yesterday, so we don't have those results. But really just want to thank everyone for the professionalism, collaboration. Chief Perkins Cohen, just for her leadership in this. And frankly, all of the principals and school health coordinators and staff that have been supporting this effort at the school. So thank you to everybody. And then finally, in the past week, I have received a number of emails and communication from many of our staff and families who have been experiencing connectivity issues, especially when trying to log on to virtual learning. The problem really is related to the numbers of students and teachers who are using the network and video-intensive classrooms, excuse me, video-intensive applications like Zoom in actual physical classrooms. So part of what is creating that workload, it's overwhelming. Some key components in our data center. Baltimore City is not alone in this. We actually have been consulting regularly with other districts in Maryland, like Howard and Montgomery County, that are experiencing the same challenges. Our IT department has taken several mitigation steps in this past week to increase network speed. We're also working with vendors to replace some of those effective components. But in the meantime, in order to alleviate some of the stress that we know has been experienced by families and staff, we're exploring the use of hotspots in classrooms where appropriate. And what we have seen is that in schools that have begun moving in this direction, they have reported much faster accessibility to virtual learning, as well as some of the additional steps, most recent steps that, that the team has taken in the, in the last couple of days in particular. So we're definitely working to reduce that. With spring break next week, it's going to give us time to actually reinforce some of this. I definitely, we, the team realizes that these difficulties are absolutely frustrating. Like I said, I have read every email that has come to me from staff and families who are learning virtually. We are committed to doing everything possible to mitigate this problem quickly, as well as really to anticipate what the future needs are within our infrastructure, so that with some of the, the, the additional federal support through ESAR funding, that we'll be able to buttress the system over the long haul with things that were deferred because, frankly, of funding challenges. The new influx of support will help us to do that. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are working. We do have some interim measures, and I do, like I said, appreciate the patience. And we will, we will, are continuing to work on that. So that concludes my remarks for this evening. I want to thank you Chair Chinia and the board for the opportunity to share tonight. And I will turn it back over to Chair Chinia.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisus. If I, if I could just have just a point of personal privilege. As I listened to the North Bay presentation, it took me back a few years when I had the privilege of going to that site in Hardhat to, to see the construction of North Bay. And so now to see what has happened and how the program is even involved and evolving even more in terms of helping our students, it's really just a wonderful thing to behold. So I also want to extend my thanks to the folks there and the work that they're doing. And I feel very old when I can say that, I'll tell you. At this time, we're going to have an information and discussion item. We're going to be hearing a presentation on proposed changes in location for charter schools for school year 2021, 2022.
Good evening. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. And I'm going to share for information tonight, some requested changes. So as we have schools who are new that are opening or who have been in temporary spaces, on an annual basis, we may bring forward, like we are doing tonight, requests for changes in location. So schools submit the materials around those requests. In March, we go through a vetting process that starts as soon as we get the materials and goes through the month of April. Tonight, we're presenting it for information, and the board, you will vote on this on April 27th. Part of the review is meeting with, having different offices, as well as our new charter, charter school advisory board, review their requests. Some of the things that are considerations for any kind of proposed change is making them understand the rationale for the move and why the proposed location is a better location or the right location for the school community, the readiness of the facility, and any kind of renovation or repairs that are necessary to prepare it to be safe for students, their financing plan, make sure there's enough funding and that is appropriately costed out for both acquiring the facility and any kind of renovation or repair work that's needed. They also submit their detailed timeline and projects so you can make sure that we're lined up for readiness for the next academic year, description of the facility with architectural drawings, their recruitment enrollment plan. Often, these could be a different community, so how are you going to ensure you're maintaining enrollment? Transportation plan, as these have, when you have a, a new school that opens up in a community, these can have impacts on the community in terms of the flow of traffic and ensuring that there's a safe plan for students entering and coming out of the school during dismissal and arrival. The engagement plan, so how do they make sure that all the stakeholders in the community were aware and are supportive of the requests? And how did they notify the school community that they were considering such a request? And then engagement of the surrounding community, because it's a big, it has an impact, not just on the students and families who attend that school, but also to communities that surround the area of the proposed facility. So those are all the things that we consider. We will share feedback on each of these considerations before the board votes on the 27th. And so the request before us, we have one request this year is for New Song Academy. They are a charter school located in the Sandtown Winchester community. And so this proposal is to still stay in that same community. New Song, for people who may not be familiar, focuses on the development of academic, intellectual, social, and emotional growth for students, strengthening interpersonal dynamics for families for lifelong learning, growth and development, and leadership anchored in social justice. They're operated by the New Song Community Learning Center, and they've been operated by them since 1997, when they were a new school initiative school. They converted to charter school this year. So this is their first year operating as a charter school. And they're seeking to move to 1323 North Gilmore Street, which is the old Gilmore Elementary School program. Right now, they are located in their privately-owned facility that's about a block away from where Gilmore is. It has a capacity of about 190. And so last year, the board approved their enrollment plan, which includes increasing their enrollment to 360 by 2425. And so the Gilmore Elementary Building is a better-sized space for them to allow that growth. Their current facility is, is pretty small location, so it would allow for that growth. So that's, you know, part of the rationale of wanting to move into that location. Are there any questions?
Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for, for bringing that to us. What I've heard from a few members of the community of Sandtown Winchester Achievement Academy, there are schools that are in very close proximity. I know that there is a cap on the amount of, can you just talk about that a little bit? Because there is some concern about having that school so close to the Sandtown Winchester Achievement Academy and the, the, the potential loss of maybe students from that school that we've invested in and that we've got several community partners investing in. So can you just talk a little bit more about that in relation to this particular proposed move to the old Gilmore building?
Yeah, absolutely. And I thank you for asking that question. So part of what, when, the, when you guys as a board approved their expansion, part of that request included what's called a geographic attendance area. And so what that does, right now, like New Song is located in that community. The, they're very proximate to SWAY. They sit on the Sandtown Winchester Achievement Academy zone and have, you know, sat on that, on that zone when it was Pendle Hughes and Gilmore Zone, when Gilmore was around since 1997. And so part of what the geographic attendance area does is it controls their growth so that they don't expand, their expansion has to come from students who live outside of that zone. So it tries to keep them at the same impact that they're having today, just based on their current size, would, would stay as they grow. So they get to that higher level of growth. It's going to be based on recruitment from outside of that school zone, from more citywide, which they have the ability to do now as a, as a charter school, is to, to recruit citywide. So there's protections in place as part of our, we monitor schools' lotteries every year. And any school that has a GAI, we're monitoring their percentage of increase to make sure that schools are staying compliant with those controls. They were very sensitive as a, as a school board, even in their application, around not wanting to have an impact, a harmful impact on SWAY. So we're all aligned in trying to ensure that Sandtown Winchester remains a healthy school. We want that to be very successful for the school community, right? Because there's, where a number of closures have resulted in the combination of SWAY. And our promise and our commitment to the communities improved outcomes for our students and wrapping around that. So ensuring that those protections stay in place is important to us. And here, it's also important to them. It's something they named in their applications to us. And it's something we will continue to monitor. When we go through the considerations, we'll lay that out more. I know we have new board members, so you'll get more details around that when we start working through all the things that I established. So tonight, we just kind of wanted to share that this request will be coming to you for a vote. But what you'll get before that vote is like more details on all of those pieces to, to aid you in your decision-making.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Are there any other questions from board? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And as you said, this will, we'll get more information, this will come to the board for a vote on April 27th.
That's correct. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thanks. At this time, I'm going to review the consent agenda, and board colleagues, please let me know if you'd like to have an item removed, and please be certain to state your question so that staff can be ready to answer if we're pulling. I'm going to be pulling items 8.02 through 8.04 so that our student commissioner will be able to vote on those. But are there, would any commissioner like to pull any of those and have specific questions around any of those items, 8.02 to 8.04? Okay. All right. If not, I'm going to move to the, yes, Commissioner McFadden?
I'm just having a moment pulling up the agenda, and there is something that I wanted to, yes, I want to pull 8.02, the proposed calendar.
Okay, it is pulled. Do you have a specific question?
In addition to us voting on it, because a student commissioner can vote on it, there were some discussion in our last public meeting that was not addressed yet. The board hasn't heard anything about some of those questions. Particularly me, I'm thinking more innovatively about the calendar and how we're thinking about these asynchronous days, looking at additional samples of schedules and models and how things are happening. I was hoping to get some of that information prior to the meeting, and I didn't. So I would like to have a little bit more discussion about it before we consider voting on that this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I also wanted to pull, I know it's already been pulled, 8.02, for the same reasons Commissioner McFadden just said, but also to discuss more around like what else is happening as far as thinking innovatively about the schedule, looking at other ways to modify this calendar. So I had to, and I just want to voice that it's for the same reasons and the same types of questions that have not been addressed, that I do not feel comfortable moving forward without a further discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Were there any others from 8.03 or 8.04? If not, I'm going to move to the other items. Okay. 8.0, so I'm going to move to the other items that are listed. 8.01, 21st Century Annual Report. 11.01, Duron Incorporated and School Specialty LLC. 15.01, Nichols Contracting Incorporated. 15.02, OSS International Incorporated. 15.03, Temp Air Company. 15.04, Y of Central Maryland Head Start.
Yes, could we pull that, please, Madam Chair? Along with 15.05? And my question is simply, how does that fit into our portfolio with, in relationship to the Judy Centers, and how were those schools selected?
Okay.
I also, could we pull 8.01 too? I apologize to have you go back. I couldn't get off mute.
Go ahead, your question?
And simply the impacts of COVID. Have we been able to move forward with any capital improvements related to 21st Century Schools? Are we still on target and under budget? Or what are the impacts of COVID, especially just to highlight that for the community?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. 15.06, Restoration Engineering Incorporated and Soil and Land Use? Tech, I'm sorry, Soil and Land Use Technology Incorporated. Read the whole thing. 15.07, Siemens Industry Incorporated. 15.08, AR Marani Incorporated. And 16.01, Power School Group LLC. Okay, so what I have so far is 8.01, 8.02, 15.04, and 15.05. Right, and 8.04 have been pulled. Okay. Thank you. So we're going to move into public comment. Speakers from recognized groups will have the opportunity to speak for five minutes. And first, we have Christina Duncan Evans, who is representing the Baltimore Teachers Union.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Duncan Evans, and I'm the Teacher Chapter Chair of the Baltimore Teachers Union. As more and more teachers and PSRP's are returning to in-person learning, we are facing a new set of challenges that I'd like to describe tonight. One of these challenges is internet connectivity. Across the district, parents and students are having trouble accessing virtual learning because with more people streaming video from school buildings, our needs have exceeded the available bandwidth. The BTU alerted the district about the limited internet capacity of our schools prior to this expansion of in-person learning, and it's a shame that these concerns continue to persist. Tens of thousands of students who rely on virtual access have now been cut off from their teachers for seven straight days, further damaging their education. Once again, we push that the district focuses its efforts on improving education for where most students are, the virtual environment. Another issue teachers and PSRP's are facing has to do with social distancing guidelines being followed in schools, especially at lunchtime. In many instances, particularly in the lower grades, social distancing is nearly impossible, and many staff are concerned about the district's recent consideration of discontinuing the two-pod 48-hour rules about student cohort contact. In the lead-up to the expansion of in-person learning, limiting staff to two pods with a 48-hour waiting period before interacting with third was seen as a major mitigation strategy that would limit staff exposure. Now that more people are going back into the building, a critical protection may be going away. With 24 positive COVID test results reported last Thursday and 17 reported on Monday, we need to maintain and improve our health and safety procedures, not remove them. We've also received member concerns about the COVID testing ban that visits schools. Members who received a positive pool test result last Friday are being scheduled for follow-up testing next Wednesday. This exceeds the 24 hours in city schools plan and indicates that the current testing resources are already insufficient, even though not all schools have opened yet. When we initially heard about the testing ban, its purpose was to test staff and students who had developed COVID-like symptoms throughout the day. Now the ban is also being used for follow-up testing for positive pool tests, and with more schools opening soon, the demand on the testing ban will soon increase even more. How are city schools going to provide the resources to maintain its own timelines when additional staff and students return to their buildings? Our members would like to know why they're being mandated to teach from school buildings the week after spring break, when students are mandated to stay home and access their classes virtually. The city's COVID-19 numbers are increasing, so it doesn't make sense to ask staff to leave their homes and risk exposure, only to teach virtually in buildings with inferior internet access. Please change course and allow staff to work virtually in the week after spring break. Teachers are concerned about this year's high-stakes evaluation, which affects their pay and certification. Many teachers are completing a Student Learning Objective, or SLO, which measures student data from assessments in an attempt to evaluate the effectiveness of instruction over a given period of time. This year, teachers can remove student data from their SLO if the student dismisses 50% of the class or more. In many schools, particularly in elementary schools, staff were instructed to take attendance only during first period and not during the rest of their classes. Many students are showing up for their first period, getting marked present, and then they're not attending classes later in the day. This means that for a later class period, a student can technically meet the 50% threshold while only having participated in 10% of your classes. We are asking the district to revise its attendance threshold for SLO inclusion from 50% to 75%. This spring, teachers will be formally observed teaching in-person and virtually at the same time, despite receiving very little training on how to do this. They'll be evaluated by administrators who have never taught this way, and those administrators will be using a framework that was never designed for virtual instruction, much less simultaneous in-person and virtual instruction. A high-stakes evaluation that affects teachers' ability to be licensed, as well as their livelihoods, in a time when teachers are being cut off from the majority of their students due to limited school internet capacity, while also lacking the support to do their jobs successfully, is unfair, uncaring, and punitive. Teachers and PSRP's are asking the district to slow down on further expanding in-person learning and instead address the issues that have emerged. While it is great to be back in contact with students who are not logging in, we are delivering instruction with far less effectiveness and success across the board. We can find solutions together, with students, staff, and families all contributing ideas. And a recent example of this type of collaboration, the Baltimore Teachers Union partnered with local restaurants to raise money to distribute over 30,000 N95 masks to staff in buildings after our request for high-filtration mask was rejected by the district at the negotiating table. The people who are currently having their professional lives and their education upended should have more say in how we move forward.
Okay. Next, we have Annabelle Horowitz, who is representing the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. My name is Annabelle Horowitz, and I'm in the 10th grade at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute of Technology, and I am a member of ASCBC. I'm here today to talk about 70% assessment policy and express my concerns about it. Currently, we are in the middle of a global pandemic. With this has come a significant amount of issues, including plummeting grades in school performance and deteriorating student mental health. In fall of 2019, BCPS has updated their grading policy. For many students, this caused significant distress. Depending on your school, your assessment grades account for between 70 and 100% of your class grade. In the city, the city should not hold students to such a high-pressure system, which inappropriately focuses on tests over classwork, homework, and class engagement. While testing is used to indicate a student's intelligent qualification and their skills in application and memory, assessment performance does not always accurately reflect their true capabilities. With this model comes several disadvantages. A student's assessment scores are particularly problematic if a student is not a good test-taker, has learning difficulties, or struggles with attention or anxiety. This is a particular concern for students who receive special education services through a 504 or an IEP. Or better said, than special education, accommodations. When students spend an excessive amount of time studying for exams but have poor testing performance, they often score low. With the current grading policy, when a certain amount of low exam grades are entered, that can notably decrease, decrease one's class grade. Eventually, one can sit in stressful all-nighters skipping a good amount of social plans and school practices for test studying and project making, and they begin to lose their actual life. It also means people's self-esteem decreases. They start to doubt themselves and realize they will no longer have a high of a chance of being accepted into their dream college. Kids are struggling now, and we have more failing grades than ever, as the pandemic is crushing our motivation and attention. This grading policy is not helping. Instead, it has been extremely harmful. How does it help the schools or city to have so many kids failing? Also, when we return next year and have to deal with the learning loss, this grading system may be punitive. Schools may have to spend a large amount of time with review, and if not, they will leave out several students who need it. The time we need to ease back into the regular experience is significant, and we need a grading policy that is supportive as we return to normal life. I do not have the knowledge on how this policy was, decision was made, nor if they based it in evidence or research. I wonder how many other districts are using this kind of grading policy and whether they are aware of how negatively consequential it is. With that, I would encourage the boards to research alternative options. While this grading policy is positive for some students, it negatively affects a sizable portion of us. I apologize. Therefore, the assessment grades account for between 70 and 100% of your class grade, should change to perhaps 50% or less. This would mean increased positive performance for many students and decreased stress. Students need to make time to enjoy themselves without having to worry about assessments affecting class grades to the level they do currently. We need to discuss changing the system in order for notable improvements to take place where we will have a remarkable positive effect with BCPS's grading policy if we return to assessment grades accounting for a mid-modern amount of your grade. I'm aware the policies, the decision will be announced soon, and do wish the district board and whoever else has authority over it will take this into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Chinia, you're muted. I still, I still muted, Commissioner Chinia.
Am I now unmuted?
You are now unmuted.
Okay. Again, I want to thank Ms. Horowitz for her public comment, and I'm turning it over to you, Mr. Gant, for the remainder of our, for our comments from the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first video is from Ms. Rebecca Yanaway of the Teachers Democracy Project.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a first grader in city schools. My child is a fantastic teacher, and our school has great leadership. Despite the excellent communication and care we receive from our school, it has been a rough year. Virtual learning is certainly not ideal for most learners. Though I understand the need that has driven the district to reopen schools and the desperation families feel to have their children back, this decision to go back has taken a toll on those who have opted to stay virtual, which from what I understand makes up about 75% of the student population. Here are a few of the difficulties. The internet is much less stable in school than it was when our teacher was home. We regularly lose connection and sometimes those big chunks of learning time. There are also new scheduling issues. There are two breaks per week for health screenings, fire drills, and we now have a lunch break from 10:30 to 11:30 in the morning. Overall, the schedule has a lot more jumping on and off, which now adds another thing for families and kids to manage. It has felt like starting the, starting the school year all over again, with all of the initial hiccups and bumps that new routines and schedules bring. All this disruption has allowed for a total of nine kids in my child's class to go back, five on two days and four on the other two days. This is an impossible year, and I don't envy those at the district level who are feeling the weight of students who are falling behind, as well as the anger of teachers who don't feel their health and safety is prioritized. However, in addition to the disruption that my family and others have gone through and the many difficulties faced by teachers and administrators, I'm most concerned that all this effort to reopen schools is not actually achieving the goal of reaching those who are struggling the most. The reality seems to be that the few students going back are benefiting. That these are not necessarily falling behind during the, based on what I can tell from the data presented at the school board and the data at my own school, those coming back seem to be a broad cross-section of people rather than those who are falling behind. As we move forward, we still need to figure out how to meet these needs. We need to know what struggling families need from us and then actually reach them. As a board, I hope you will ensure that we find out what these families need and make sure that we use any extra resources we get from the federal government to prioritize these least served students, while at the same time causing the least amount of harm to teachers and the least amount of disruption for families who remain at home. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, we have Shamir Smith, I believe commenting live. Shamir?
I'm here, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to join you today. It has been an honor to serve students, parents, and my administration at city schools for over five years. Each time I'm interviewed by national and international media about my advocacy work, I'm always asked if I had a choice- I'm always asked if I had a choice to teach anywhere else, I always say I'd always still choose to teach at city schools. I'd like to break down my new life, though, for you by the numbers. 366 days ago, I experienced my first COVID symptom of a sore throat. But it's been 380 days since I've been in the best and only place I've ever taught, and that's at ACE. Over 700 days ago, my eighth-grade class achieved the highest games of middle-school park scores, English scores, in the city. 390 days ago, though, the state came into my classroom, leaving with faces full of awe and wonder at the students who passionately argued about the love triangle in a Midsummer's Night's Dream. One day ago, I emotionally reflected on having long COVID for a year, a disabling and debilitating condition that attacks the body's immune and inflammatory response after initial infection. For five months, I lost my vision. Six months ago, I had to publicly ask my family and friends for help, for financial help. Nine months ago, while being racially profiled, I begged doctors at local hospitals to take my symptoms seriously. It was also nine months ago that I desperately reached out to Councilmember Nat for further help, which he was able to grant, thank God. Three months ago, I spoke in front of the NIH about the detriment it would face if it didn't recognize how long COVID would impact Black and Brown people in urban communities, especially in communities like ours, where we live and we work and we serve every single day. Each day, I can't tell you how much I wish I could teach. However, I have memory loss and cognitive impairment that makes this wish impossible. Today, I sit before you as a newly-disabled woman, not able to do the very thing I love to do the most, and that's teach my middle schoolers at ACE. I humbly urge city schools to provide education and the human capital guidance on leave and disability benefits for those affected with long COVID. It is a condition that will threaten the structure of our workforce and impact up to 30% of Americans that have had the COVID infection, including myself. For the sake of ourselves, our students, and our stakeholders, we cannot afford to simply leave employee benefit guidance to federal leaders. We can create clear and compassionate guidance now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Smith. Next, we have a video from Ms. Jessica Toomey talking about after spring break.
Hello, my name is Jessica Toomey. I am a current teacher in the Baltimore City School System. I teach 11th graders at the Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women. I've been teaching them virtually since September. And my students, the majority of them, have been very successful with virtual learning. They have experienced no network disruptions on my part. I'm here every day with no issues, at home, on my Wi-Fi that works spectacularly. I've seen so many frustrated students, teachers, parents, principals, who are having a hard time dealing with all of the network disruptions that have been going on since more students have returned to the building, more students and teachers. I am fearful that when the rest of the staff returns to the building in a few weeks, that we are going to experience even greater disruptions. And the consistency that my students have been used to all year is suddenly not going to be there anymore. They've come to rely on the consistency that I have been giving them, and I think with the disruptions, not only will their learning be disrupted, but their social and emotional well-being will be disrupted also, and that really worries me. And I think we are going back hastily because we feel like we need to be back in buildings to make things, quote, "normal" again. They're not going to be normal for a while, and I think we need to really step back and think about the number of students that will miss out on the education they've been getting all year before we return fully to the building. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an audio message that was recorded by Mr. Matthew Scott regarding 21st Century Schools.
It is... I'm a veteran teacher. I've taught for 12 years, and most of those years have been at John Murray Elementary Middle School, number 228. It has grown by leaps and bounds during my time there, and we moved into a beautiful 21st Century School only a couple months before COVID swept across the nation. This past year has been a struggle. Although I am fortunate to have an enormously supportive administration, incredibly dedicated coworkers, and absolutely wonderful students, those things are only part of what teachers need to be successful. I'm concerned that the district's failure to look at our school system holistically is hurting our students because it is hindering our teachers. I've been pleased by the district's focus on the social and emotional well-being of our students, yet that initiative rings hollow when it is put forth by a school system that continuously disregards the well-being of its teachers. Leadership cannot say on one hand that teachers should care about the social and emotional well-being of our students, while on the other hand disregarding that of teachers. A teacher corps that is ignored and disregarded by administration can't at the same time be asked by that same administration to focus on the well-being of the students in their classroom. Something needs to change. How are teachers being disregarded? Let's start with the SLOs this year. SLOs are one part of the teacher's total evaluation score. In the middle of a worldwide pandemic, BCPSS decided not to alter the way it evaluated the SLOs. This year, we have had our instructional time reduced. Research has shown that under the best of circumstances, teachers can only cover about three-quarters of what they would normally cover while teaching online. Yet, teachers have no real voice in the SLO process. We can't look at what our students need and then go from there to create a meaningful SLO. The ability of teachers to be actual practitioners of our craft has been completely divorced from the SLO process. Something needs to change. Recently, some teachers have been asked to move back into the classroom to teach a few students, while the rest learn from home. Some parts of the plan have worked well. Because of the internet issues we face as a district, however, I'm often unable to teach like I used to just over a week ago. The tools I learned to use to monitor my students' progress on assignments during class no longer work because the district has failed to provide teachers with the internet infrastructure we need to teach our students, most of whom are still learning from home. So, we all struggle, students and teachers, to continue the momentum, routines, procedures, and progress we had created since the first of the school year. I love my job, I love my students and colleagues, and I love my city. Something must change, though. Our district leadership often makes a decision, creates a plan, and then shares this information with the community. I would ask you to consider how this process affects us all. I suggest, instead, the administration listens to teachers and parents to create a more dynamic and successful district, built from the bottom up. There is an incredible wealth of knowledge in your teachers that is virtually untapped. We have amazingly talented and caring parents throughout the city. We should honestly listen to them and their needs. We, as a district, must take a good look at the systems we have in place and ask ourselves, are these systems helping us to reach our goals? Are they helping us create an atmosphere that helps us teach our students most effectively? Are we helping our students fully reach their potential? How can we teach our students to fly when you're clipping their wings?
Okay, next, we received a video from Ms. Marisha Ingram. Unfortunately, I did email... I did email Marisha that the video didn't work, so I don't know if you're on... I don't see. So, if you are listening, you can email me if you'd like me to share with the board, but unfortunately, that video didn't work. Final public comment is an email from Ms. Rachel Duncan of PCAB, which I will now read. Good evening. My name is Rachel Duncan, and I'm here tonight presenting the parent... representing the parent and community advisory board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. In fulfilling our statutory role, as defined by Maryland state law, to ensure parental involvement in the development and implementation of the education policies and procedures in the Baltimore City Public School System, PCAB's Policy Committee members meet monthly to review the new policies and propose revisions to existing policies that are scheduled to come before the school board policy committee and eventually before the full Board of School Commissioners. Baltimore City Schools Procurement Policy, Policy DJA, is slated to come before the school board policy committee in June. PCAB would like to thank Acting Procurement Director Jessica Wilson and the members of the Baltimore City School staff, who met with PCAB Policy and Budget Committee members earlier this month to discuss our experience with the procurement process. While we recognize that the Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, system that the district plans to implement will make it easier for the district to provide more transparency into the services provided by vendors and the vendor performance achieved at the school level or by other categories such as grade level, we would still like to push the district to make transparency improvements now, especially during the policy revision process for DJA and as the district moves from vendor selection into implementation with the ERP. Now is also an important time to improve procurement visibility for stakeholders, given the hundreds of millions of dollars of additional funding expected to become available to Baltimore City Schools in the next 60 days from the federal COVID relief, COVID-19 relief dollars available through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund III, known as S.R. III, which is part of the American Rescue Plan, signed into law earlier this month. Parents and community members deserve a lot of sight into how this public funding is spent. A list of board-approved vendors and contracts is available on the public... available to the public on the district website, and PCAB has requested some enhancements to this list to increase its usefulness for members of the public to seek to understand district spending with as many vendors. We have requested these enhancements because, at present, the vendor sheet just lists the vendor name and a general category. A parent or community member interested in a vendor will be required to: One, check the vendor sheet. Two, research relevant sounding vendors as a services or the services they are providing to the district is not described. Three, once they find a relevant vendor, open board docs. Four, search for the vendor by name. Five, review each PDF for relevancy. First, we have requested BCPSS to add a link in the vendor list to the procurement and board docs for procurements going forward and a brief description of the purpose, something like authorize a renewal agreement for educational services for math tutoring, or social, emotional learning consultant services. We understand that going back will be laborious, time-consuming, lift, and staff are stretched. Going forward, adding a link to the procurement and board docs seems like a good compromise that would help inform parents and community members without overtaxing staff. We have also requested that going forward, whenever a procurement comes before the board, it lists the names of the schools in which it will operate if known. At present, some procurements list the school and grades, others just the schools, and some lack any information on where the program will operate. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I did just get an email about Ms. Marisha Ingram's video, so give me one second. Okay, it looks like it works. I'm going to play it.
I am a parent of Baltimore City Schools children, and I'm speaking to Baltimore City Public Schools Commissioners and CEO, Dr. Santalisis. I just wanted to say that I am comfortable sending my children back for in-person learning just yet. I did have an experience with COVID, a personal experience with my children at the beginning of the year, where my twins were sick and I had to end up taking them to the hospital. They were out of school for two weeks, and the hospital couldn't tell me what was wrong. And then, after that, that's when we found out that there was this pandemic of, you know, COVID-19. So, that could have ended a lot differently for me, and that's scary, so I don't want to have to relive that again, knowing that I'm not going to send my children into the fire, I'm going to say. I do get alerts from the school about COVID tests, positive tests at the school, and how they have to shut down and clean everything and things like that, and that, to me, basically validates my reasoning for not sending my children back like that, not until everyone is vaccinated, until it's safe. I know that virtual learning, it may not be ideal for everyone, but it does seem to be the safest choice. Working from home is tough as well, but, again, it's the safest choice for myself and my children. You know, they are trying... The school is trying to keep things interesting for the children, keep their, you know, mental health, you know, upbeat, the Fun Fridays and things like that, Lunch Bunch, and I do ask that they continue to do things like that and add on to those, you know, types of things to help these kids, they're kind of more social, or just kind of just help their emotional well-being in this time. I know my children are suffering, but, again, it's the safest place to be right now is home. So, you know, with that being said, I know that I'm not alone in deciding to keep my kids at home. You know, I heard that 75% of children are staying at home and continuing virtual learning and not, you know, returning to in-person, and I ask that you not forget about these children, that 75%, and invest your time, ideas, and resources, you know, to make virtual learning more engaging and fun and better for emotional health of students, you know. I do thank you for listening.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gant. Commissioners, based on the public comments, are there any additional items that any board members would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair? I would like... Can we pull item 15.06? I have a question.
Go ahead. What's your question?
My question is really, does the impact of COVID-19 cause us to have the need to add additional fundings into the maintenance and repair of the HVAC systems that are at 25 sites?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any others? If not, is there a motion to approve items 8.03 and 8.04?
So moved.
Commissioner Bandima?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second read.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bandima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor. There are no... No one is opposing or saying so. This motion passes, 10 in favor. Okay, now, I'm going to go back to the items that have been pulled, and the first was 8.02, and there was a question... I'm sorry, 8 point... Yeah. Let me do 8.02 because of Commissioner Sykes voting on that one, then I'll go to the ones, the other ones. So, 8.02, which was the calendar, the proposed calendar, and there were several questions that commissioners wanted to have some answers to, I think, from previous conversations. Is the CEO here as well?
Yes, I am, yes.
Yes, I am. Yes, 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 yes. So I did want to jump in, Commissioners McFadden and Commissioner Griffin, to, to say that we recognize right now that the calendar presentation is following the annual schedule of coming to the board for its approval, which is sort of a natural sort of time in the year that that happens. And yet, we know we are working in a very unusual calendar planning as we're thinking about next year. So I think the questions that I just want to, you know, begin with is, is recognizing that we are going to need time in the next several months to be planning out how our reopening and restoring and redesign work and reimagining work is going to impact or how it may impact calendar and be able to come to the board with ideas, suggestions, and recommendations, if and how calendar things are, are coming up for us. And I say that because the stakeholder engagement that we are doing right now with our school leaders, our teachers, our families, our community to understand how we reshape our professional learning, our school day and these things, it is a, an evolving process, and we need to be thoughtful and intentional on it. So I want to thank you for, for raising it because it is something that we need to be very intentional about while recognizing the annual space of approving a calendar. We know that the how we get at professional learning this past year was changed because of, of the pandemic. And so we are looking to see what has worked well for teachers in terms of how they have spent their half-days and how we front-loaded days in August. And so those are things that we are working right now in teams and work groups to come up with our recommendations for how we go forward, knowing that there may be some calendar pieces we need to come back to the board. So I think it's that tension of needing to meet the annual expectation of getting that calendar out there because it is that time. However, we know that this is an exceptional time to be planning in such an uncertain space as, as we keep learning and evolving of what that calendar will look like. Chief Davis and I have been working with teams to begin these conversations and getting the stakeholder input along with Chief Highcupboard, uh, working with families and communities to get the inputs around how we go about this reopening work and what implications that may have with regards to calendar. I know, Chief Davis, I don't know if you want to weigh in, but, but I wanted to know that, but I also want to make sure I'm answering the questions if there are other questions that I can answer in response to these, to these points.
I would just add that I don't think it's too dissimilar to last year where we had a traditional calendar and then changed the beginning of the year when we realized we needed more professional development. While I don't know what the calendar will, if, if there are changes, what it might be, if we have to come back to the board for that, we will absolutely do that.
Thank you both for speaking to some of the general questions that we had. I think my thing is just being able to take a moment and pause and think proactively about the next year. I know we have deadlines and whatnot, but we've seen over the past year that those deadlines may need to be moved. We may need to be more flexible in the way that we approach creating schedules, creating calendars that's going to govern over 100,000 people's lives, you know, in the city. And so thinking about that, um, it would be, in, in my opinion, I see it as an opportunity to take a pause and actually get that community input before creating a full calendar. Because voting on and saying yes to a, a traditional regular calendar right now gives the appearance that we are not taking into consideration our students, our families, our community members that will be impacted by the calendar. And so I hear you and I say, yes, there is a tension there. And for me, it's better to be more proactive and involve the community in this decision before confirming a calendar than to be reactive and having to go back and change it and that confusion around, you know, start dates and professional development at the beginning of the year and half-days and what the school year is actually going to look like. That can come about for families that have to plan their lives around the calendar itself. So I think that's like one of the big pieces that I just want to raise. And I feel like we have an opportunity to rethink the way that we approach processes and the way that we do things for, for our students and our families here in Baltimore.
May, may I just also add that there is also the tension that some of the, uh, development of the calendar is based on, uh, on agreements that we have. I, I mean, you know, some of those lists of days that we have to use and, and mandatory dates that we have to follow. So where I, where I, where I appreciate the, the need for flexibility, I also don't want us to lose the fact that in some cases, it would require actually going to the negotiating table to change some of the things that are already legally binding. So just, I just want us to be aware of that particular tension also.
Well, with that, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. And I certainly appreciate and share many of Commissioner Griffin's, uh, Griffin sentiments in regards to this. I just want to know what is binding us to approving a calendar right now? Is there a particular deadline that we have to approve our academic calendar by? Does it align to our fiscal year? Madam Chair, you talked about some contractual agreements. So if that can be highlighted for the board, I think it should be highlighted now. I would love to see before this comes to us just a bit more of what we were discussing in the last meeting that did not come to us prior to tonight. Are there other, um, is there any innovation that can come out of a calendar? If we know that we're hearing community concerns and if we're getting community feedback, this does give us an opportunity to actually take more of that into consideration while also juxtaposing some sample schedules from other places across the country that may be looking at academic calendars in a bit more innovative ways. And if we do not have to set a calendar on March 23rd, 2021, for next school year and 2023, I just want to know what is binding us to right now versus taking a little bit more time to get some more feedback, to do some of the work that we've been asking to happen prior to us saying yes to this, knowing that, yes, we will have some changes. We will have to come back and be a little bit more flexible in, in the future, I understand that. But how can we, to Commissioner Griffin's point, be a bit more proactive in the process? And then also making sure that there is a bit more transparency with community feedback in the process as we're educating the children of Baltimore City? So I just want to hear more specifically about the time constraint of us approving it today versus taking a little bit more time to do all of the things that you all are mentioning and to bring back a more robust calendar proposal to the board.
Commissioner McFadden, I can speak to that. James Torrance, Staff Specialist for Strategy Compliance. So to give me an idea, the calendar is just the bones. The calendar that we present is just the bones in terms of professional development, the number of days that we allocate for the 180-day requirement, the 1,080 hours. And from that, we do our operations perspective on how we do things. So that's how we identify when our staff have holidays, when schools have holidays as well, and it creates the cadence. But we can, the things that we're flexible with is changing that cadence later in terms of professional development. The other pieces in terms of holidays and breaks are legally required. We do submit this and we perform exercise where we send it to the state in April, which they have, which they're planning to accept. And then we can always update them later after one with a new calendar. And I say that it is just the bones because what happens in the school day between the six hours and 50 minutes or six hours and 40 minutes, it's up to the planning that the, um, the C A O is talking about. Those creative things that can happen. So in terms of the structure, we're just creating the bones. And whatever the muscular structure looks like, the face, the eyes, and everything else will come from that.
So, um, Mr. Torrance, part of what I'm also hearing from the board that I just want to be able to state publicly, and I will rely on Commissioner Griffin and Commissioner McFadden to confirm if I'm hearing correctly. What I believe I am hearing is a concern that if this calendar goes in with traditional structure, that the ability to change more than just PD days, because that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing more than just where are the PD days gonna be? Where is the holiday break gonna be? But there's concern that some of the things that we have been talking about that are part of national, state, and local discussions about shifts in calendar, like we have already. We have 100% schools in the district, lower previously, lower performing schools that start the school year two weeks before other schools. What I'm hearing is, do we want to use time differently beyond just, do we start for PD? And so my question is, one, will we still be able to make those changes? Right? And two, what happens if we are late? Because I'm also, because we need to, the board and the public need to fully understand the ramifications of if this gets turned in late, decide whether we want to take those ramifications and then chart a different course, which might mean, again, please, you know, and, and by the way, Commissioner Griffin, I appreciate both you and Commissioner McFadden's nodding of head because that makes it easier for me to know whether I'm going in the right direction. Right? Is, is that the other piece to this could be scheduling a time where we come back to the board for the more robust presentation that Commissioner McFadden referenced and, and actually put that kind of formally in place so that the public and the board know when that discussion will be lifted. So I, I would say that I think there's at least two layers. One, what are we permitted to do? If we do not hold to that timeline, what are the repercussions? And even taking all of that into account, we, I would propose that we get back to the board with a formal date where we will present and both they and the community will know when we are going to update them on when some of the more robust discussions about school calendar can be surfaced in light of larger reopening, larger fall way of, way of operating. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, ma'am. So to give you the clearest and most concise answer is that we can submit in March and April, and then we can come back anytime before August before they publish to the entire state our calendar. So we can come back before August and give them an updated date. What we doing, what we typically do is in April and March, after you approve the calendar, provide them with the actual dates that we do and we just calculate the number of days and hours. After that, we can come back so long as we fit the, meet, meet the minimum requirement. So we can create, create a calendar, then come back and then actually amend it at any time and then submit it back to the state again, which is stating that we still meet the 180 days and 1,080 hours. So, so we can satisfy the requirement and also come back and create a more robust calendar as well.
Mr. Torrance, thank you. What is the deadline for submission to M S D E?
The deadline for submission to M S D E is, um, April 21st.
Correct, yeah. And so what happens if it's not submitted on April 21st?
Typically, they still, some, typically, some school districts have gone beyond that April 21st, but they will continue to ask for those submissions. But what we've done is that most districts who come back with changes have approved the calendar, then came back with the robust changes and actually just specified the start and end dates. Namely, the state wants to know what your start and end dates are and what your holidays are, and as well as the number of hours and days that you allocated. That's it.
Sorry, Mr. Torrance, continue, please.
So if we change those dates, we just update the form and we update the state with which the start and end dates are.
So if we, so if we begin earlier, sorry, Commissioner Griffin, where are you gonna say? So if we were to begin earlier, right? That, that's not going to be penalized. Because see, what I'm hearing is they want to know the start date and the end date. And what we're saying is, depending on the discussions about what kids need, there may be a different start and a different end. That is not sacrosanct, correct?
Yes.
So I guess part of what I would ask the board is, and I'm sorry because I do see Commissioner Griffin and Commissioner Reed, so after I just ask this question, I'd then invite you, please, to also share your updated questions, is that if we were to propose pri, pri, to not take the vote this evening, to delay the vote into May, that would then give us time to be able to share further with the board what some of the plans and considerations are to the calendar based on, for example, feedback that we're getting from the family survey that's not back yet. Right? And some of the engagement activities that were being described, that that would be a possibility. That's all I'm gonna put out now. Go to Commissioner Griffin and Commissioner Reed.
Absolutely. That, that was just the point I was about to make, Dr. S, is that it seems like we have some lead time. We have some lead time and can take the time to be proactive, get that information back from the family survey, get more input from our students, our community partners that might be able to help with whatever creativity we come up with around the calendar and utilizing everything in the community versus kind of creating double work and submitting and then going back to the drawing board and then resubmitting. We can work on getting it better. I don't want to say right, but better that first time around and still give ourselves some time if we want to tweak it again before August, which I feel like is a, a best-case scenario. So I, I'm right in line with you, Dr. S, in thinking about, let's, let's push it back. Let's, you know, proposing not voting tonight so that we can actually do some of that work with the community to develop what this looks like for schools to come back.
Yes, ma'am. I can communicate that to the state and let them know. Other districts have moved forward with calendars, but they're also going to come back with revisions as well, so from partners throughout the state. So everyone's going through the same process with the state now in terms of what is traditionally what we have required to do and then what we're trying to do the right, the work right. So I'm just want to make sure you're aware of what the trend is right now around the state.
Thank you, Mr. Tor.
We're Baltimore. We don't want to be on trend. We want to be ahead of the trend.
I, I see Commissioner Reed and then Commissioner James.
It sounds like most of the focus is on calendar year 21, 22. Is 22, 23 secondary? When we make the proposal to M S D E, are we required to put 22, 23 in there so we can focus on 21, 22? Or they're required to have both at the same time?
They only require one calendar, Commissioner Reed. We do two calendars because it allows us to do planning for our offices as well as families. So we provide not only a proposed calendar, but a draft calendar as well.
Okay. The reason I asked that question is it sound like we have to do a lot of planning, a lot of engagement for 21, 22, which would make 22, 23 dead on arrival. I mean, that's the way, that's, that's my mindset.
No. So 21, 22 is our proposed calendar and then 22, 23 is generally followed the same framework.
Okay, I guess, okay, that's all right. I guess you don't get my point. I guess my point is, if we're, the focus of this discussion is the fact that we know that it's 180 hours, we know that, we, we, 180 days, we know there's 1,080 hours, and we're going to be looking at how to manage 21, 22. If we're looking to manage 21, 22, their out-year, 22, 23, are also going to require changes or revisit.
Yeah, we, we will revisit and that'll be part of the multi-year planning, Commissioner Reed. Right? So part of the, part of the multi-year planning, which has been characteristic of the planning we've done this entire year, has meant a cycle of getting the feedback, I think as Commissioner Griffin's saying, knowing that even what we come back and present in May, may adjust again. Right? And similar process for how we see things go this school year will then need to take place for 22, 23. So I don't want you to, to mistakenly think that because this is something that is due to M S D E annually, that that means we are approaching only looking at one school year. Right? So we're taking that into account as the planning, but what we need to submit to M S D E needs to reflect where we are now. But, but we're gonna have to take a look at how things proceed this year before we put anything in stone for 22, 23. Does that make sense, sir? Okay, great.
May I add something, Dr. Santalisis?
You absolutely may.
So from the feedback we received from families and staff, they generally like the format of what the calendar is now, but their question is, how is that, how does the school day look? And I think that the conversation is getting at, do we change their, this skeleton now, but also change what the day looks like as well? So what I'll do is I will come back to the board and communicate with our state partners what, what is the implications for these decisions and what we can do and assess out a plan so that Dr. Santalisis can share with you guys. so that Dr. Santalisa can share with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Torrance. And I just.
No, sorry.
No, 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 and I was just gonna thank, no, I was just gonna thank the board for this kind of conversation, because I do want to just also say publicly that this is the part of the planning we're doing for the next year, and so the cycling back in, like, I just appreciate the surfacing of this, because that's the kind of push and pull we're gonna need to continue to make to have this work. But I'll turn it back over to you.
Now, Commissioner James, I think.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner James.
She didn't have her hand up.
Okay, sorry.
No worries.
So I am, I am. Go ahead, Commissioner McFadden.
I just wanted to go back to just a positive, kind of, right? To Commissioner Griffin's point, Baltimore is a leader. Right? So I hear what other systems are doing and what is happening around the state, and perhaps this may cause the state to perhaps reevaluate things on a more broad scale as far as how calendars are looked at and all of that. So with that, I just want to move that we delay this vote to May on the academic calendar for, the proposed academic calendar for FY 2021, school year 21, 22, and the draft for 22, 23.
Okay. If that's a motion, is there, is there a second? I was about to ask if there was a, that I was sensing a consensus, but if you want to do a formal vote, we can do it either way.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Great, second.
Is anyone opposed to this motion? Okay, see no opposition, and this motion passes, that we will table this vote on the, on the calendar, so 8.02, table, then we'll come back to the board on future date. Okay? Thank you. So I'm gonna go back to 8.01, which was the 21st Century Annual Report.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dorothy Hellman. I'm the executive director of the 21st Century Program. So I'm going to be responding to the budget and COVID. So where the budget is concerned, MSA remains on target and under budget. We have 17 out of 28 school buildings completed, and to date, we have $1.06 billion that has been issued in contract awards, out of the $1.2 billion that has been raised in bonds. So to validate the fact that we're under budget, Governor Hogan, back in September last year, actually sent out a notice that the MSA achieved $60 million in savings through efficient project management and bond issuance transactions. However, I do want to add to that record that if you consider the additional funds that has been used to supplement the scope of other projects, then one can logically conclude that the savings is more closer to $100 million. The reason for this is, back in March of 2020, Highland Town Number 237, or scope was increased from $19.1 to $20.9 million, due to, again, the increase in scope and the cost. In July of 2020, Commodore John Rogers, or scope and budget, was also increased from $21 to $42 million, due to going from a systemic upgrade to a renovation and modernization of that school to accommodate the 1,000-plus students. And just in this past December, cross-country, the scope changed to a replacement, and that budget went from $26 million to $42 million, and that's due to the 500-year conversion of the female floodplain issue that we had to address for the school. So we are definitely on target, and we're definitely under budget. As to the COVID impact, construction is considered an essential service by Governor Hogan, so no construction project went uninterrupted. Our entire staff worked virtually, and we continue to visit project sites. The impact that we saw was really in cost, having to provide PPE, medical personnel on-site to provide temperature checks, protective equipment, and any extra measures on-site to protect workers. We have had shutdowns a few times, where we've had a COVID outbreak, where someone exhibited major symptoms, but we were able to sanitize, and again, to get back to work in just a few days. The construction team have had to work nights and weekends to meet goals. That did, again, result in some additional cost, but with all that, the schools are open on time. In 2020, we opened four schools. We're currently on target to open six buildings this summer, 2021. Our office is staggered with regards to staffing. We take personal responsibility when we're on-site. We have seen some uptick and some slight delays in the supply chain, but we've also been very proactive in ordering or furniture, and fixtures, and equipment, and instructional devices, to make sure that we're not impacting any school openings. So that's the supplemental information with regards to budget and COVID impact.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and congratulations, on time and under budget are the words that every construction person needs to hear. So thank you for your work and the work of your team.
You're welcome.
So is there a motion to approve item 8.01? Commissioner McFadden, and second?
Second, Brooks.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Okay. McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yeah.
And I'm in favor, and so this, this item passes, nine in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item that was pulled was 15.0, there were two, so I think we'll do those two together, 15.04 and 15.05, which dealt with the Head Start programs, one by the Y of Central Maryland, and one Catholic charities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, my questions there are simply related to how those fit into our portfolio plan, specifically with the Judy Centers, and how those schools were selected. And then third, if we have any data on the rates of retention of students that participate in Head Start in our programs that stay and matriculate through first, second, third grade. Go ahead, Crystal, sorry.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I could answer at least two of those questions. So the first question regarding how the locations are chosen for Head Start, we have not had many new locations that have come on board, so the locations that are currently there kind of are historical, so they've been with those schools for a while. In regards to the relationship with the Judy Centers, Judy Centers support those Head Starts, whether they are on-site with them, or if they are in the neighborhood. So the Head Starts are required partner of the Judy Centers, so regardless of where either of those are located, they're kind of always working together. In a perfect world, we have a Judy Center and a Head Start all kind of coexisting within the same building, but we don't always have the space for that. So it's definitely something that we look for as we are kind of selecting locations for Judy Centers, but it's not all the way a requirement, but they're still partnered and working together. And regarding the, kind of the matriculation data, we would have to follow up with that to see how many of those students kind of stay with us through second and third grade. So we have to follow up on that one.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm asking that just in relation to our engagement and re-engagement strategies in enrollment, and also to highlight for the new board members, so that they know all the fabulous things going on in city schools.
Commissioner McFadden, I take your hand, and then I see Commissioner Reed.
I apologize, I didn't mean to keep my hand raised. I apologize.
No problem. Commissioner Reed?
I'm just, I'm just, this is reiteration, but hopefully they can talk about, because we had a meeting with the Ops Committee, and they did a great job of talking about the great job they've done in terms of PPE, funding this, and careful, how careful they are with the kids during this COVID period. And if Dr. Washington, if somebody can speak to that issue, I think it's pretty impressive for us to know what they're doing for the young, and how that's working in the whole system. I thought it was pretty impressive.
So I'm sorry, this is Dr. Washington, and my camera is not working right now. But yes, to address Commissioner Reed's comment during the Board of Ops meeting, we spoke just very briefly about how that most of the programs are operating outside of city schools, that are early learning programs that are using our space, that has a lease or permit for our particular space. Many of them are in compliance with the MSDE's guidance around operating early learning spaces, but they're also ensuring that they're also in compliance with city schools' guidance around social distancing, the frequent cleaning of the spaces, and also using the PPE, which is the same thing that we use for our kindergarten or any other learning, early learning programs. So they're also following our standard operating procedure guidance document that's available for the public, along with MSDE's compliances, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, is there a motion to approve items 15.04 and 15.05, because the Head Start programs?
Moved approval. James?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm in favor, so this, this, these items also are approved, nine in favor. Thank you. The last item that was pulled was 15.06, the Restoration Engineering and Soil and Land Use Technology. Commissioner Sykes, did you want to, I think you had the question there?
Yes. So my question is really centered around, I really want to know, does the impact of COVID-19 require us to make sure that we have additional funding, to make sure that we are servicing our HVAC systems, and to make sure that, get that up to date? So basically, I want to know, is this, is this contract, is anything COVID-related hindering this contract, the money that we're putting into this contract? If you understand that question, I'm not sure.
So this is Lynette, this is Dr. Washington. So just, just for clarity sake, one thing, I just want you to know that, so this contract is for a roofing inspection. So this, this contract is not directed towards HVAC, but any of our HVAC-related work that's the maintenance would not sit, would not be presented under capital. So this is a capital-related contract for roofing inspection. Anything that you, so you, the, your first question was around increasing dollars for maintenance for HVAC, and I will say that, on that side, yes, we are increasing dollars. We are using access to some of the grant resources to support our HVAC, upgrading our filters, which is something that we've presented to the board on numerous occasions, but we're also doing updates to some of our internal systems, and so like exhaust fans, which have impact on ventilation in bathrooms. We're doing some upgrades and addressing some of those systems. So across the board, we are touching our HVAC systems. You'll see more of that in our general fund dollars, not so much in the capital dollars.
And I do want to tell me real fast, too, and I do think, and I actually apologize, because I did get my item numbers mixed up, so I apologize about that.
No problem at all.
Okay. So Commissioner Sykes, was it a different one you were actually asking about?
Well, she, she, she did answer the question.
She answered it already?
Yes, she did. Thank you.
And Chair Chinia? Chair Chinia?
Go ahead. Yes, Dr. Santalisa.
The other thing I just want to flag for the board and the public, given, you know, I think the timeliness of Commissioner Sykes' question, is that at the federal level, there is now kind of proposed infrastructure legislation. I won't get into what we all know we'll go into that process, but I do think it is significant that there is substantial conversation occurring around investments in soil infrastructure that are coming down the line. And so to the extent, you know, that the board can, you know, continue to support our own elected officials, particularly those who will be part, like Senator Van Hollen, who's been very supportive, and others, I think it's important that, you know, that that's a place for continued communication and advocacy from our district and the board, that I just want to highlight, because that, that would be substantial. And then also point out that Dr. Washington and the team, along with Chief Doherty, have been doing, excuse me, an analysis of each round of ESAR dollars, ESAR funds, to see how we can deploy some of that resource, specifically towards what we know need to be building upgrades and other things connected with ventilation, that we're allowed to use that for, and that, that is part of why we were able to do some of the work that we have up until now. So that's why we have the air purifiers and other things in there, but I think what the piece we're looking at now is how we do more long-term leveraging of these one-time dollars to help kind of buttress what we already know is there. And then, you know, the local, our local city delegation this session and last session has been very instrumental in getting additional dollars that we know will fund additional kind of school buildings and renovated spaces. So I just wanted to point that out, you know, given, like I said, the timeliness of Commissioner Sykes' question.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that also addresses some of what we also heard in public comments. So thank you very much for sharing that. Is there a motion? Are there any other questions or comments around this one? If not, is there a motion to approve item, what am I on, 15.06? So moved, Roberts. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Griffin.
Thank you. And we are voting those in favor. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, and so this item also passes, nine in favor. And thank you. And now, is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
So moved, Richardson.
Okay, so I got Ms. McFadden, and second, Richardson. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, yeah, McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson then?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So, uh, thank you, those items passed nine in favor. Thank you very much. Um, I know sometimes you probably wonder why I keep, uh, you know, having to read all the names and have you to do that, but please know that this is helping in terms of the, uh, the recording and, and the official minutes that we need. So when I can, I will, I will try to do it quickly. We're just asking for opposition. But some of these, we really do need to record, uh, actual votes. So thanks for your patience. Uh, now I'm going to turn it over to the Office of New Initiatives for the Compliance Report Presentation for Board Policy IHBJ Charter Schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
Evening. Um, my name is Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
Uh, and we also just want to acknowledge, um, the role that Teresa Chief Jones and Heather Nolan and Laura Bush, um, and Ari Sana, um, played in putting together a lot of the data that you see in this presentation. So there's a lot of work, a lot of teamwork. Um, so this is our annual report. This is always a backward-facing report, so it's looking to the prior school year. So we're looking at school year nineteen twenty. Um, and as we all know, uh, the, the data that we're going to see is really going from the start of the school year through March, when the pandemic first, um, hit us. So just, uh, note that for some of the key data points per, um, the board policy. We're required to report on fiscal accountability, student performance, and any other matter required pursuant to the charter. Charter schools play an important role in our district. Um, they're our partners, um, in, um, not off, not only in offering a variety of options to meet, um, our very student and family needs, um, but also to help us, um, offer high quality and to improve the education that students in the city of Baltimore receive. And we have, um, about a hundred and seventy-one, um, um, programs, um, in the district. Eighty thousand students, uh, for this school year. Um, thirteen, um, thousand of them are seventeen percent were charter students. Um, that's the population. We are the leader, um, for charters in the state. We have, um, almost seventy percent of the charters in the state, thirty out of forty-eight. Uh, and we have two new, um, charter schools that will be opening this fall. Um, Pemblico Elementary Middle, which is, you know, converting from being our traditional school to our charter school, uh, and Clay Hill Public Charter School, which is a new school. And so one of the things I think is important for us to highlight, and it's interesting because there was sort of an allusion to this earlier in the calendar conversation, is like this is an area where we are a leader in the state, and I think nationally, honestly, for our rigorous application processes and our evaluation processes, as, as well as how we work and partner with, um, our charter schools. Um, uh, we have continued to partner with strong, um, operators, um, to open schools. Uh, so within the last ten years, we've opened twelve charter schools, or almost a, a school every year, um, including the two that we just, um, talked about that are, um, opening and converting this fall, Pemblico and Clay Hill. Um, through our operator renewal process, we have, we've, um, since twelve thirteen, when we first, um, started using it, we've implemented, uh, a reflective, evolving process. Um, and, um, I think it's, um, the way that we look at both qualitative and quantitative measures, um, uh, and the way that we work with our, um, school partners around renewal, I think is important and highlight. Uh, in particular, I want to highlight, um, the addition of our effective programming for all student racial, ethnic groups metric that's part of the renewal process. It's something that we have always looked at, um, in renewal and the Fidelity Charter. Um, and two years ago, we separated it into its own measure. Um, uh, so not only has it been important to us that all of our schools are meeting the needs of all students and closing achievement gaps and addressing achievement gaps before they happen, um, but that they're thinking about, um, equity and the, the varied approach of what that means in terms of practices. And we've seen schools evolve and grow in their practices over time because of this attention paid to, paid to it. Um, and so like, uh, we've seen schools adopt, um, different strategies, not only around like recruitment, but also looking at what kinds of curriculum they're using, um, going through anti-bias, implicit bias training, uh, adopting protocols that teachers use to ensure that they're really asking rigorous, um, questions of all students, they're providing access to all students, uh, and that they're really thinking holistically in a variety of ways of how they meet the needs of students. Um, the other thing that, um, we've done is we updated our policy, uh, in two thousand nineteen twenty to extend our contract terms. Um, we in Baltimore had been partnering with operators before there was charter law in the state. Um, and that actually came up in our earlier, when we talked about New Song, who was a new school initiative that opened in the nineties. Um, so we've been serious about this work with partnering with people to help us bring strong, uh, educational outcomes to students. Uh, and so as part of our charter policy, we extended the terms, um, to, um, eight years, which is the longest, uh, term available in the state, um, for schools who, uh, meet certain criteria and show a strong track record of success, um, through the renewal process. Um, in that year, we were able to award, uh, Wolf Street Academy with an eight-year, um, contract term based on that, um, rigorous standard. Uh, the other thing that we look at, um, so we use a map of our Community Conditions Index, um, which was developed by, um, Dr. Stewart in our Office of, um, uh, Planning. Um, and what this shows is, um, our charter schools from school year nineteen twenty and, um, where they're located, um, based on that Community Conditions Index. And so communities that have, um, higher access to local and city amenities are, um, in the green areas, and communities that have lower levels of access to those things are in the, um, red areas. And you can see the flow from the table below. And by amenity, and, uh, and that, uh, amenities, what I mean is access to food, access to, um, transportation, the safety and crime stats in the community, um, the, uh, wages in the community, those sorts of things. So looking holistically about that. And what you can see is that our charters are located throughout communities, uh, in all of the different, um, Community Conditions Index, and throughout our city too, uh, from this map. Uh, so, um, throughout the presentation, um, you're going to see our charter schools mentioned into two groups, wholly new charters. So these are schools that were created through an application, through an idea. Um, they typically serve students, um, citywide. Three of them have a good geographic attendance area. Um, but the bulk of their involvement for all schools that are wholly new are through citywide, um, lotteries. Uh, and that is twenty-three schools, um, in this year. Uh, then we have what we call conversion charter schools. These were existing, um, traditional schools that converted to charter. These schools continue to serve their neighborhood and are only open citywide to students out of zone when there is space. Um, and, uh, the impetus for, um, communities, um, for conversion schools is actually to be reformed to improve what was happening before. And so we have seven schools in school year nineteen twenty that are conversion charter schools. Um, and so you can see the breakdown, um, throughout this presentation. You're going to hear us, um, you're going to hear us and see us show comparisons to wholly new charters, conversion charters, charters as a group, traditional schools, and in some places, we talk about alternative and specialized schools. Um, the other thing we wanted to kind of just note is just, um, uh, noteworthy achievements of, um, some of our schools in school year nineteen twenty. Um, and if you look at prior presentations, I think every year, um, um, you know, for at least the last three years, if not longer, we've been, um, having, uh, at least one charter principal, um, in school year nineteen twenty. It was Mark Gaither awarded with the Heart of the Schools, um, Award, um, which is for, you know, exceptional principals. Um, and, uh, similarly, uh, at least one or if not more, um, other, um, school leaders, um, honored. And so we had Tiffany Halsey from the Bella Edison School and Ashley Moore from Empowerment Academy, um, honored with that, um, with that award. Uh, Tiffany Halsey is the middle school principal at Bella Edison, um, which has two principals. Um, additionally, our Baltimore International Academy was granted the La Belle-Fraque Education Seal by the French Ministry of Foreign Affairs in recognition of its French Language Immersion Program. Uh, and so the work they do around language immersion is very, um, it's, it's noteworthy and very strong. I highly recommend, um, board members, um, visiting their program to see that in action. Um, and then, uh, one of the things we've been emphasizing and, and, um, schools have been doing a great job is, is sharing strong practices. So we wanted to highlight City Neighbors. Um, they, for the last nine years, almost a decade, have held what they call the Progressive Education Summit. And it's a place where they invite, um, schools across the district as well as from, um, across, uh, the city that are, uh, like from private schools and other schools, as well as national leaders to come together and share best practices. Uh, additionally, um, as a district, we adopted a curriculum called Be More Me, um, that's used district-wide for middle and high school students. And part of the impetus of that was, um, through the work of a City Neighbors high school teacher who has a unit called Who Deserves a Monument? Um, and, and so that collaboration and that, um, work, um, uh, was part of what led to, um, work that included other teachers, um, in developing the Be More Me curriculum. Uh, recently, uh, NPR did a story on the work of, um, uh, City Neighbors and their students highlighting, um, this project. Uh, so I highly recommend people, um, uh, taking a look at that.
Now we're going to look at, um, student demographics and data. The first thing we're going to look at is Latino student enrollment. Uh, Latino students are one of the fastest-growing demographic groups in the district. And we can see that, um, conversion charter schools have consistently had the highest proportion of Latino student enrollment. Um, but one thing to note here is that as traditional schools, um, have seen their Latino enrollment increase by five percentage points over the last four years, um, the increase that we see at charters is, um, a little bit less. So the Latino enrollment is growing in traditional schools at a faster rate, um, than what we're seeing at charter schools. Um, we're also looking at, um, the breakdown between general education and students with disabilities. Uh, when you look at the overall numbers, you'll see that charters and traditional schools have similar levels of students with disabilities. Um, with alternative specialized schools, obviously, having the largest proportion. Um, but when we go to the breakdown of LRE levels, this is, LRE is the least restrictive environment, um, with LRE A being, um, the most time that students with disabilities spend in general education classrooms and higher-level LREs like B and C, um, requiring more specialized services. We see that, um, traditional schools have a higher level of these, uh, students in LRE B, C, and above, um, than other, than charter schools. So these are students that require a higher level of services. And we're seeing a higher rate of those at traditionals than at charters. Um, in terms of the kindergarten readiness assessment, this is an assessment that measures the readiness of kindergartners to, um, entry, enter school. We see that wholly new charters receive students at kindergarten, uh, more prepared to begin schools than at, uh, traditional schools, and then with conversion charters, um, receiving the lowest proportion of, uh, kindergartners ready to enter school. And, um, when we look at promotion rates, um, we see that at elementary and middle grades, um, all school types have promotion rates, um, approaching a hundred percent. Um, in high school, though, we see more of a differentiation where we see, um, selective high schools with a ninety-two percent rate, followed by all charters and then non-selective high schools, um, with, uh, a bigger gap, um, in terms of promotion. We're going to look a little closer at, uh, secondary students. So just to set, um, the, the stage, we have six charters with high school programs, and they serve, um, about nineteen hundred students. And when we look at this data, we're going to be, uh, looking at charters overall. And traditional schools, we are looking at selective high schools. Um, those are ones with, um, entrance criteria like Poly, um, ESA, um, Mervo, Edmondson, um, and high schools with none, without any, um, selective criteria. So, um, when we look at the demographics at the secondary level, we see that charters and non-selective schools have similar levels of students with disabilities, um, with traditional, uh, selective schools being, uh, much lower than that. In terms of English, English language learners, um, non-selective high schools have, um, a much higher proportion of these students than either charters or selective schools. And also with overage students, we again see that, uh, non-selective high schools have a larger proportion than the other school types. And this, um, is significant because students with disabilities, English learners, and overage students, um, all require more resources and more support, um, than other student groups. So we see that the non-selective high schools have, um, higher proportion of these students than, uh, charters or the traditional selective schools. And in terms of graduation rate, we see that selective high schools have the highest rate, followed by, um, charter high schools, and again, the non-selective high schools, um, with a lower rate than the other two school types. And in terms of climate, um, we're looking here at chronic absence rates. And, um, you know, chronic absence is a complicated problem, and it's an area of growth for schools throughout the district. We know that there are a lot of factors that, uh, contribute to chronic absence. And, um, you know, schools have practices that they can implement to affect these numbers. So we want to make sure that, um, that schools are places where students want to be and want to go to, uh, to learn. And we want to make sure that schools are, you know, providing resources for students in order to get them to attend regularly. Um, this is something we look at, um, in the charter renewal process. And, um, for the district overall, the, uh, you know, Schools Office is doing good work in, um, you know, identifying root causes of chronic absence, um, across the district. So if we look at these slides, uh, this first slide is elementary and then, um, middle school rates. And you can go to the high school. We can see, um, uh, high school has, again, at the non-selective high schools, has a, a very high rate, that, uh, you know, the district is working to, uh, to address. Next, we're going to look at, um, at teacher and principal statistics for our charters. It's very important, um, district, uh, district's priority to, um, recruit more black teachers. Um, we have seen in research that, um, having more black teachers in classrooms, um, helps achievement for students in all racial groups. So we're very, uh, sensitive to this. Um, when we look at, um, charters, we see, we see that, um, eighty-two percent of students, um, charter schools are black, as compared to seventy-four percent at traditional schools, while, um, teachers district-wide are only forty-three percent, um, identify as black. So we are working as a district to, um, increase that proportion of black teachers in our classrooms. Uh, when we look at the breakdown by school type, we'll see that, um, charters have higher proportions of white teachers and, and a smaller proportion of black teachers as compared to traditional schools. And if we go to the next slide, we'll see that this also, um, holds true for principals as well. So we see that, um, about half of, uh, principals at, at charters are black. And, um, And as compared to 48%, another half identify as white. Looking at the experience of teachers at traditional schools, we can see that traditional schools have more experienced teachers than charters. So we see charters having a higher proportion of teachers with zero to five years' experience and a smaller proportion of teachers with 10-plus years. And for principals, it looks a little different. Again, charters have a higher proportion of students or principals with zero to five years' experience, but they also have a higher proportion of teachers with 10-plus years' experience as compared to traditional schools where we see over half of teachers have between, or principals, excuse me, have between five and 10 years' experience. And the last thing we are looking at is fiscal accountability. When we look at charters nationally, we see the greatest number of charters, charter failures are based on financial problems. As Angela said, running a charter school is, is much like running a small business. So we want to make sure that our charters are fiscally healthy. And we have, you know, reporting requirements throughout the school year to, so that we can monitor the financial health of our charter schools. And during the renewal process, we do a deeper dive into charter finances that looks at audit submissions, cash flow, cash reserves, and things like that to ensure that we don't have any charter schools that are in danger of failing for financial reasons. So here we have the fiscal accountability ratings for schools that went through renewal in 2019, 2020. And I just want to open it up to any questions or comments from the board.
Are there any questions, board members? Comments? Christian Griffin?
Yes. Thank you all for this presentation. It's always great to see like our data points for the city and what's happening with our schools, in particular this time with our charters. I have a few questions that are just understanding-related for, for me and for the broader public. And then some that are just thinking about what we do with this data and how, how it's informing practices moving forward. The first question I have is for, I think, slide two. And it kind of notes that there are some data points that are not available, that would normally be included. I was curious to know what data points are they, that would be quote-unquote "missing"?
So we usually get the assessment data, so like park data. So there was no park last year. And so breakdowns between the different grade bands. So that's like one of the key things that's missing from, from this presentation.
That's understandable. Thank you. For slide nine, this is where my math teacher hat goes on, so in advance, forgive me. But I'm looking at this graph and any of the other graphs that represent data that are in this form. And for, for me, I'm not able to really extrapolate what's being communicated here. Like what population is this coming from? For each of the different categories, the percentages is that overall as a whole from conversion schools only or overall as a whole from the entire district school population, I was just, I wanted some more information around that.
Yep. So the first line is our conversion charter schools. So those are the schools that were traditional schools that became charter schools. So you can see their growth went from 14 to 16%. Most of our conversion charters are located in the southeast. And that's where we've historically had high Latino enrollment. But as our city is changing, we're seeing populations of Latino students in different parts of the city, like Northwest Baltimore, for example. So that's changing. We did a four-year look here because we felt like the three-year look hid some of what was happening. And so like when you look at traditional schools, the, the rate is changing from 10% to 15% when you, when you look at it over time. Whereas that 14 to 16 for our conversion schools. And so the traditional schools are in gray. The black line is the whole district. So that's everybody together, what it looks like if you step back as a district. The pink line is both kinds of charter schools as a group. And then your yellow line are wholly new, so those idea schools.
So the black line is the percentage that represents the total population of Latinx students across the district and where their enrollment has been. But each of the separate lines, it's that population extrapolated out for that specific type of school.
Exactly.
Okay. Got you. That helps me understand that a little better. I think in the future, I don't know if this is too much information to put on there, but it might be helpful to, like you have in the other graphs, where you have the N-number. So we know like what the population amount is. If you could list that under the labels, it would give more, a little bit more context, I think, for me.
We'll definitely do that. I think the other thing we failed to say, so I want to say that here, is that we will, in April, so we do this presentation now, also have a written companion report that goes along with this. It has a lot more detail, so you'll get that soon.
Got you. I think for page 13, I may have just missed it. Slide 13 was just like, how many traditional non-selective schools are there district-wide? Like what's the number I was looking for? Maybe I missed it.
So these are schools that serve, right, non-traditional schools that serve high school grades. And so I don't have that in front of me. So it's about, and I can give you the, I'll follow up with Christian to give you the exact number. Which is off the spot. It's about 14 schools, I want to say. And I want to say we have five schools that are selective, so 20 schools that serve high school grades in the traditional side. I think that's right. Well, I'll follow up with the exact number in case I'm wrong in what I'm remembering it.
Got you. And then slides, now I have to read my own handwriting. Slide 16, I think. The dotted line there, that's just the, is that the district average?
Exactly. Should have just shown you where the district average is for those populations. So how it looks when you compare everybody to the district as a whole.
Got it. Okay. That is helpful to understand this, too. My last question is, especially when we start to look at like where students are choosing to go, and then also where our, our teachers who identify as black and our principals who identify as black, where they are placed? Like what have we dug into? What other questions are we asking around the whys for that? And then the other question I have is just the gap that we see in some spaces between the performance of traditional schools versus charters, which is a highly contentious conversation when you think of it, you're, you know, when you take it out of context. Like how are we thinking about what's in the gap? You know, what, what is creating a gap in some spaces versus others?
Can you, I'm going to answer your first question, but can you kind of, I feel like I didn't really fully grasp your second question. But I don't want to forget your first question, so I want to answer that first and then give you a chance to re-ask your second question. But okay.
Okay, yep.
So for your first question, like one of the things that we look at, so we look at this in a variety of ways. So like for principal placement, schools recruit for their principals. So they do a recruitment. So it's not a, there's a mutual consent process where a school says they want that principal and principal says they want that school. And that's how they get placed at that school. For charters, they're able to tailor their interview process. It has, they can do like a waiver through HC. So it really gives them a lot of control on how they do that recruitment part. In terms of like understanding, we understand the research shows like to close achievement gaps, you need leadership and teachers that reflect the student populations that are teaching them. And so that's important to us. So in our renewal, when we talked about that at the beginning, that effective programming for students across racial, ethnic groups, that's one of the things we're looking at. So we're looking at, do you have best practices? So it's not just looking at the performance between student groups and what schools are doing about it. But like, we know that this isn't about, that what's causing those gaps isn't just about the results of performance and say, oh, I'm going to do more tutoring or things like that. I think in the early days, we used to see schools kind of adopt those processes without understanding how implicit bias shows up in school. How different people have different standards for students. Like their research is really clear that students are not all getting access to grade-level content, right? That they're not doing, that not all students are getting access to accelerated courses like AP or so, and that goes into how you're recruiting teachers. And so one of the things that we look at and we evaluate in renewal is that, like your recruitment of staff, of your leadership, how are you ensuring there's a reflection of students in every place that we show up in school? And the people that are teaching them and the content and the subject of the content, the authors of the content. So we're looking for those mixed approaches. We've also incorporated that, seeing those same kinds of questions in our new application process. So soon, Commissioner Griffin, pretty soon, you'll be experiencing the new application process for these schools. And that's one of the key things, too, that we look at there. So, so that at the beginning, schools are thinking in this way and continuing to have conversations around that. So that there's a real intentional holistic look that's not based in some of the stereotypes that I think that exist in the world.
Okay. Thank, thank you so much. I think one thing, it may not even be a question, it's just like food for thought to chew on, is how do we better extrapolate data, not to just compare charters to traditionals, but to compare real apples to apples and oranges to oranges across the spectrum of different types of schools? So we can really start to dig into some root cause issues that may be popping up in specific segments of schools that have a similar amount of population, similar demographics, similar resources. So we can really start to think about how to support those schools and not just comparing like the charters and traditionals, like how can we really dig into that data a little bit more?
Yeah, I think one of the negatives of not having that park look is when we do that, we do do a comparison of schools to like schools based in looking at indicators of economic disadvantage, English learners. So you would, so if this was a regular year, you would see that kind of comparison of schools similar, serving similar populations to each other, which doesn't have that particular data point. But I take your point, too, because I wonder if there's ways that we can do that with some of the other data that we, that we shared.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Any, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Alvarez and staff. Thank you all for the, for the update. And as you said, there'll be a fuller written report that will be coming to the board as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I am, at this time, I'd want to just check with two of our four-chair committees and meetings recently to see if they would like to give any highlights. And that would be Commissioner Roberts from the Operations Committee and then Commissioner Brooks from the Policy Committee.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Roberts is having some technical challenges. If Commissioner Brooks would like to go first?
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, did you want to share anything?
Just that I'm inviting folks to check out our next meeting, that it's always welcoming new voices into the space. And always looking forward to hearing more and more from the community in terms of what they want and what they need to see and policy that will be reflective of their needs. But I do also have two other questions, one related to COVID and SCL. I didn't know if we had time to sort of get to those.
Was this from, from one of the presentations or just you?
They were for some of the, the data points that Dr. Santalisa mentioned earlier today.
Dr. Santalisa, I will, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Brooks. Well, we have, we have passed the time, and this is for general conversation by our own guidelines. We've passed the time for that, to do that kind of a conversation. Are there, are there things that we could put in writing and get a response to?
Sure. So I can ask the questions now. So one specifically is, a little bit of the, the major decision-making was for doing in-person learning was around parent choice. And because of parent choice, we now have in-person learning. And sort of all of the sort of data issues that we're facing, particularly around bandwidth, we have about 12,000 students in schools and we have about 68,000 still doing in-person learning. So one, do we have any metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of the, to rather, metrics to determine whether or not this method is effective for the other 68,000 students who are now having interrupted service that because of the folks who are in person and pulling on the bandwidth? And I know Dr. Santalisa has talked a little bit about sort of some of the current mitigation strategies and the switches, that sort of thing. But are we sort of, are there any guiding metrics to say, hey, this isn't worth it because of the 68,000 students who are constantly having uninterrupted, I mean, rather, interrupted time with their teachers? And what that might be the impact on their education, educational outcomes specifically? And then the second one, the second question was specific to our SCL, which was, we know that depression and anxiety, as we heard from the student from ACBA mentioned earlier around testing and grades. My question then is, what specific data points do we have on the mental health needs of our students? Both quantitative and qualitative in terms of the impact of COVID-19 on their ability to do their academic work in school, whether it's in person or in the classrooms? Particularly, what are our ratios, again, given that our students, as we had heard echoed earlier today, are experiencing new forms of mental health challenges? And sort of, interesting to figure out how our SCL has sort of shifted to be responsive to their academic and emotional needs in this particular moment and sort of what tools are we providing to them, to our teachers, to help them manage? And I would love to see some hard numbers around sort of our ratios of support for our students and specific data points on saying what they need to be successful academically right now.
Okay. So we have those two and we will, we will submit those and get some response in writing for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to just give, remind people of some upcoming meetings that we will be having. And the first one is a youth board forum. I'm going to ask Commissioner Sykes to talk a bit about it, but I've also asked that we put up the flyer regarding this. This is happening this week. And Commissioner Sykes, would you like to talk a little bit about the youth board forum?
Yes, so would. Thank you. So Thursday, March 25th, we will be conducting a board forum with three main topics, such as funding my education, which is related to the COVID bill. The COVID bill is, is a bill that will add additional funding to furthering in making education for our students more inclusive and more, in, in, more inventive in the thinking that we do. The state of school reopening, so we've been talking about reopening and trying to get students motivated about coming back to, coming back to school and making sure that students know that there is an option for them to return. And, and our last main topic is youth mental health. We know that this pandemic has been very hard on our youth. It, it has challenged, challenged us in so many different ways. So we want, we want to work with some of our, just your staff to let our students know some of the resources that they have so they can be, so they can, they can utilize them and to know that, that we, they do have a support system. Within the forum, we will have three breakout sessions. This will be a forum conducted by youth alongside with some of our chiefs, with some of our executive directors, the school board. And the students will have a chance to really talk to the school board, give feedback about things that are working. Um and the students will have a chance to really talk to the school board, give feedback about things that are working and that aren't working. Um and things that they're interested in seeing with the school board and things that they would like to see um within their individual schools and communities. Uh that it within each breakout room, we'll talk about each these three main topics. Um and once we, once we get a a good um transparent um uh re um, I can't even think of the word. Uh did, but come to a conclusion of basically what we talked about, we will pre-present it to the board and we can all have a open discussion. When we will turn back to the main session, um again, it's Thursday, March twenty-fifth, and it'll be four thirty to six P M. Um it'll be an hour and a half, so we can sit down, we can talk and we can have discussion with um not only our peers, our youth leaders, um but the school board itself.
Uh thank, thank you, uh Commissioner Sykes. And uh I would say one of the areas that you did, we just finished, we just had a little bit of discussion about, so it'll be interesting uh to have uh students. Along with some of our staff talking about this 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 area that you just mentioned around um student emotional uh issues and 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 needs. So thank you. So please, folks, remember, uh this is open, uh and we encourage especially um our our youth. To be a part of this, but um other folks in the community are invited to attend as well, and we will all be a part of some of those breakout groups. The uh other upcoming meetings, Teaching and Learning Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, April the sixth, three thirty, and this is a virtual meeting. Um the next meeting of the board uh will be on Tuesday, April the thirteenth. The Parent and Community Advisory Board, P C A B, will be meeting on Thursday, April the fifteenth, at six thirty P M. Uh that is a virtual meeting as well. Operations Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, April the twentieth, at ten thirty A M. And the Policy Committee, as was stated earlier, will be meeting on April the twentieth, at three thirty P M. Um all the committee meetings are open to the public. They do include comment and 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 you can check on um board docs. And if you need to call the board office to see how to sign up if you would like to be a part of public comment. With that, is there a uh a motion to adjourn?
So moved, agreed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Bun Diman.
Is there anyone opposed or abstaining to adjur- adjourning at this time? If not, there was no opposition, then I will declare that our meeting is adjourned for the evening. I want to thank everyone uh for the the meeting tonight. Uh please be safe and and uh to everyone, um please enjoy the upcoming spring break, but please be safe. And remember that when we return, um we will be working virtually to give people a extra, a little extra time to be certain that we've all um quarantined or done what we need to do to be safe. Uh please take care, everyone, and have a good evening. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.